Attorney in Waco County, that was in the tunnel. I became an assistant county attorney for about five years. And then nineteen ninety-four, I became the city attorney in Newton, and that was for about four years. And I was an assistant city attorney in Des Moines for a year and a half. And then for the last twenty-three years, I was the city attorney in West Des Moines. I retired about a year ago, July, actually, July twenty-third, twenty-eighth, I think it was. I know that date. And so, having, I've got contacts in Newton because that's where I worked, you know, as assistant county attorney and city attorney for a while. So Randy Caldwell, who owns the firm, gave me at all. And so I've been doing city work for that firm for about eight or nine months. And I don't work full-time, I'm time-retired, but, you know, just do as needed. And I work about one day a week at the firm. So, and Caldwell and Briarly, they represent various cities. Valeria, maybe you work for Newton, maybe you work for Brunel, Malcolm, Montezuma. Trying to think of a couple of others. But, so, pretty familiar with, you know, with the problems smaller towns have, I would imagine. I've been doing a lot of abandoned houses. I don't know if you've got abandoned houses or vacant houses or houses that kind of need some attention, that nobody's doing much with.
Taking care of a couple of those anyway.
Yeah, so, so that's kind of the thing, you know, either through a nuisance or through an abandoned house and the city actives, I like, that's kind of extreme, but, you know, that does happen. A lot of cases involving vicious dogs, that sort of thing, littering cases. We've got suing right now, I think a contractor in Monroe, didn't finish the project, so, you know, turn that over to the firm, we'll sue them there. So, not a lot of huge cases by any means, but it's kind of, it's smaller town space. And so, I've been doing municipal law for quite a while, I tried to retire. I don't mind doing, doing part-time. So, it would either be me or Randy or somebody else in the firm, or just whatever contacts that you would feel comfortable with when you're needed, if there's any time you need an attorney to come up to a meeting, that doesn't always, I know that's not usual, you know, with all those kinds of issues, but every once in a while you might. So, so most of the time, it's just making a lot of contact with the city clerk. And, you know, just looking that way constantly tells clerk, kind of, you know how that works. So, so that's kind of, that's real brief background of what the firm would be, and that's kind of my background.
Well, what, is it okay if I, if I ask you kind of things?
Yeah.
Um, ordinances? That's what we're looking at? Two or three ordinances that need changed or new ordinances that need put in to effect? That's definitely something you guys have handled, I take it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if you, you know, I don't even know the name of the company, but there's one company that does a lot of ordinances, and you probably, I would imagine, your ordinance might be the same. Most of these smaller cities have the same ordinance for the most part, same number of governments. You know, you kind of fill in two specifics as to the city itself, but, so, but as far as changing ordinances, yeah, that's, you know, an easy process. It kind of takes three weeks usually, and then go for the... And I don't know the procedures that are specific to the city of this one that could allow you to do things in a certain way, you know, like, a lot of kinds of pass ordinance with just two reads in a way, the third, that sort of thing. So, we've got the short answer, yeah.
So, I've heard, like you said, you had, where we, city's taking properties, what is the procedure on the city selling properties that they've taken on?
Well, once you have a clear title to it, then you can just advertise it for sale. The reason, you want to make sure that you go through the proper process, you know, the four and twenty notice, and a lot of times, your policies can be, it's kind of case of property, you've got right first refusal to that property. A lot of, even in West Des Moines where I used to work, a lot of vacated areas, like vacated alleys and that sorts of things, and it usually gets right to the next-door neighbor first to purchase it, you know, but you just go through the proper noticing process. And I think, this is one of those two-hundred-and-some people, two fifteen?
Two, yeah, two ninety.
So, I, I think, you know, you probably don't have to actually put it in a paper, in general circulation. I think you can post it three places.
Yeah, we have to. No, we, we have to publish it.
Okay, so, but, you know, it's pretty standard as far as what the state law requires.
So, I think we've got, what, two or three properties that the city owns and is...
Yeah, that, that, and we may sell or may not, that's just one of the things, that's one of the... So, when, when you're talking, if we would hire you, we, we would have, not just you, we would have the other people that's on this firm.
Correct, yes.
What about reaching out to you when we have an ordinance ourselves already on the books that we don't know how to enforce? What would be your process with that, then?
You, you have contracts with the county enforcement, right?
Well, yeah.
You're talking about...
Like, how, yeah, yeah.
Do you have, um, public works, correct? Do you have a person kind of assigned to those duties?
The mayor is the nuisance officer. Right, the one that's, yeah.
You.
Well, actually, she's not.
Well, she's not.
Yeah, that's usually kind of a question as to the enforcement, but we, again, a lot of smaller cities don't actually have an enforcement office, so usually, we could have a standard letter kind of drafted up, and, and you could either fill in the blanks yourself, or we could do that where you'd like to give a notice if it's a nuisance problem, you should give them a notice and tell them, you know, you've got thirty days, whatever, whatever happens to be, your code sets out all those nuisance issues. Give them a certain amount of time, if they don't do it, then we just file a municipal infraction, which is a civil violation. And it, and part of that is, you can find, you can also ask, if you get a court order, as part of that, you file a municipal infraction, they're probably liable. Then the court will often direct them to clean up that property within a certain amount of time. If they don't do that, then they can go, have to go back to the court and answer for them as to why it didn't happen. So, so we would just handle that kind of paperwork. If that's what you wanted, I mean, and we could also provide some options too, to do that, just one kind of, you know, if they're not too tough to do, you know what I mean? You could fill in the blanks, something like a fair order, like, that all the time.
And on here, it says two hundred dollars per hour for out-of-court services and two hundred and twenty-five for in-court services and a hundred and eighty for legal assistance services. So, I'm new at this. Tell me what the difference between legal assistance services and out-of-court services are.
The out-of-court services would be if a lawyer is working on your project or your issue, and that person's not going to court, and that's, if it's an office court, I guess.
Okay.
And I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the, exactly what they charge on those.
Okay.
But the three things is if you're in court, so if I go to court to prosecute a municipal infraction or that sort of thing, okay, the time I would spend in court would be at two and a quarter, I think it was twenty-seven?
Yep, yep.
So, as soon as I come out then, and, now, I live in Des Moines, but all the, all the travel expenses, I think they probably have a travel expense requirement on there too, don't they?
No, no.
What they have to do, and so if I, if I, if I come from Des Moines, and from the time I leave Newton to the time I go to State Malcolm or Montezuma, and my mileage would be reimbursed, and then that travel time is charged off, but it's at a lesser cost. Now, I, again, I don't know what that says on there. But, but then the out-of, the administrator, where the, I think it was one eighty, said it was a non...
Legal assistance.
Legal assistance.
Yeah, that's a, we have a legal secretary that does.
Paperwork.
Yeah. Count on those for a lot, so, it's, it's paperwork and putting the documents together, and that's what it is.
Okay, okay.
Guys, what, what are your kind of issues, like nissons and...
Yeah, sometimes it's, you know, vehicles sitting around for more than thirty days.
Yeah.
You have some neighbor with some pretty smelly trash, and he'd like some answers for it.
Yeah, discharge one, and Malcolm has, there was trash going all over the place. Of course, you know, if you give them proper notice, that's usually just, you don't have to, you give them a notice and say, hey, you know, get this stuff cleaned out, depends two weeks or three weeks, and I'll file a municipal infraction. And a municipal infraction, you can charge up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for a violation, but, you know, trash and you put fifty bucks or something, there's discretion there. But what we're really trying to do is just get their attention, and, you know, and you get a court kind of telling them, hey, you got to clean this up, that, sometimes that gets them off the dimes, so... Yeah, my, since I've been working here, it seems like it's litter, vicious dogs, abandoned houses. And we've got a couple lawsuits, but one was a contractor that was, had followed through with the city, and now they got, you know, a private just sitting there. So, those are the kinds of things, but it's usually a municipal infraction, take care of it, civil violation.
Have you dealt with anything sidewalks? Sidewalks is something new that's been coming up.
There are new Supreme Court cases.
Yes, yes.
It used to be that the homeowner, if the city had an ordinance on file that said the homeowner's responsible for the sidewalks, then they would be. The court said, well, that's, that goes for maintenance and taking care of, like, snow and stuff, but when it's time to replace those, that's, they're owned by the city because they're on city right-ofway. And so, it was never interpreted that way before, most cities would just say, hey, we'll tell you, you got to fix it, and if you don't fix it, we will, and we'll assess you again, you know, for, but now, the new laws, I understand, is that maintenance of taking care of snow and obviously stuff is specifically spelled out in the state code that the cities can pass that responsibility on to the homeowners. But it doesn't say in the state code they can pass on the maintenance of taking care of the physical, putting it in and taking it out, so...
So, the, the city property starts before the sidewalk?
Well, I did, a lot of times, when they platted your city, they plaid out the roadways, and usually they're standard whist out of county, usually the county roadway sixty-six feet wide. In the cities here, they're probably a little, a little smaller, but, so that, that shows you where... But the short answer, I guess, is usually a sidewalk is one foot, there's one foot behind a sidewalk that's still on city right-ofway. That's, that's not always true, but that's kind of a general rule, that sidewalks are usually put in on city right-ofway, and there's like one foot between sidewalk and the person's house that's still on city right-ofway. So, the whole thing is on city right-ofway.
Because we were, we were trying to come up with something on trees, too. Because we've got some on the terrace, we've got some, so where is the city's responsibility?
Well, it's usually, that, that's a maintenance issue, is what the code, it does say, is that you've got to take care and trim those trees, but if they've got diseased or dead, then the city's responsible for it. So, the city's responsible to take the trees out, but they're not responsible for heating trimmed up.
Okay. So, the property owner maintains them, but if, yeah...
It's kind of taking on the dying of a disease or something, you know, as far as, a lot of times, it's all a notice issue as far as who's liable, if you didn't realize that tree was dead or it was just obstructed by lightning, well, then you shouldn't be responsible for that because you weren't on notice, but if it's sitting there rotten for three years, you know, that's, that's a little bit different issue, but... Yeah, this whole sidewalk case, I'm not sure. Oh, that's going to go, because that's a lot of liability for a city.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and then, you know, we were talking about the trees, we might train it, but, um... We don't have any ordinance that says property owners cannot plant trees on city property. So, I think that's probably something that...
Yeah, and that could almost be a policy, but you could put it in ordinance. I mean, it's kind of like, I go into your property and start planting a tree, you know, it's a trespass. So, you know that way is going to force that, it's just that, you know, you're saying if you'd like to have it specifically spelled out.
So, yeah. No questions, right here.
And a lot of times, mailboxes, you know, where I used to work, they, you know, the building was very pretty stoned, mailboxes and stuff, but those could be out of the right-ofway, that's in property. But councils are hard pressed to say no once some guy spends five hundred bucks to build a nice site, build a nice mailbox, but those are the kinds of things, that that's exclusively city right-ofway, that should be maintained by the city, and then, a lot of times, you can, if somebody wants to put something in, you could also get a whole harmless or something where it says, all right, you don't normally allow them to not put this here, but we'll allow you to do that, but you're going to hold the city harmless if anything happens, and you're, you don't have to take it out, if somebody hits that, that sort of sense, so, but, but, yeah, you...
We have, we have mailboxes on city right-ofway, quite a lot of them. Because it's the route, you know, going out of town.
And those aren't so bad, that sometimes you have to break the ways or the, you know, just the posts, but when you start putting these great, uh...
Yeah.
Things that are like a monitor now, you hit that thing, but, so...
Thank you, sometimes.
I, just one comment on that also, is that's, Pam, what you, what you were talking about as far as the city's responsibility, that all is based on where the property line is. And that is a, is a challenge in this particular community, as is many small towns, no doubt.
Yeah, it's often, you know, a lot of times, you have to go out and actually get a, a survey or something to really know where the properties are, but you can kind of, if you, when they platted out the town, you can maybe see how wide your right-ofways are, your streets and stuff, and a lot of times, you can measure out from the center, and that, that will give you a complete accurate...
As, as long as you have, as long as your center, your street center is local.
Yeah, right.
But, once again, if you're talking about, is something on city property or not on city property, that's not a, the requirement, that isn't an approximate location of that line, it's a physical location of that line. And, and that bit of information is not readily available here.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you know, you go back a long ways, where you're looking way back in the books, and there's nothing on a hundred percent stuff, you know how that is.
Yeah, no kidding, originally, you go eighty hours, dude.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate it.
Any questions, please, just give me a call, our office is open. And I'm sure Randy can answer any more questions, but he's the next one.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did a motion approve the minutes on November eleventh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and November twenty-fifth. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion's been made. Second in. Gunderson, yes. Hayes? Donald?
Yes.
Sheen.
Yeah.
Read over a few time out of report, if you don't have any control.
I'll make a motion. I'll say it.
Motion's been made. Approve the files report, and second in. Gunderson, yes. Hayes? Donald?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the bill. With a due to the tractor, Darwin.
You tell me.
This bill here for two hundred fifty-one dollars.
They got it run, it wouldn't start.
Oh.
It's not, it's not going.
Okay. It starts now?
That's when you're pulling out everything? Yeah.
I think if you want, you'll grow it.
You've got all the pressure yet?
That will be till after the first of the year. No.
Let me go have all the trees done, yeah?
One go.
One big go. Motion's been made, and seconded, paid the minutes for November. Gunderson, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Sheen.
Yeah.
You want to come over and introduce yourself?
You got here just in time.
Whatever you want to do, maybe stand there, or ask you a few questions, probably, if...
My name's Patrick Stray. I'm a new attorney at Warren McKibbin in Marshalltown. I was contacted about the city attorney position. I don't know everything that the city attorney would be doing, but I do know some of them all pretty well, like nuisances and city zoning, stuff like that. Spent a lot of time with the do that in Austin. I'm not quite sure what else.
Most of the things that we have is nuisances, other things like that. Go ahead and ask somebody, yes.
Um, we are, we have some ordinances that we want to deal with. Have you dealt with anything, or this will all be new to you?
Uh, I've taken, like, a class where we did, like, statutory writing, so it's like, looking at, one, like, a good way a code should be written, where instead of having long run-on sentences that go on for the entire pair, we're going to break it up so it's more easily understandable to people. And then also thinking through what the consequences of that would be, so it's like, well, if I don't say this, then that leaves a big loophole where someone could argue this.
Difference between black and gray?
Yeah.
Um, on here it says a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. Now, normally you'll have a legal assistant amount, you'll have an in-court amount, you'll have an out-of-court amount. Do these other gentlemen with you would be taking over?
I'm not sure who would be the other people on that list.
Well, it says Warren McKibbin, Goodman, and Lorenz.
Oh, that's the name of the firm.
Okay.
So, if I was doing it, it would be mainly me, but I would also have a secretary. If I dictate something, like if I'm writing letters or something, it would be probably dictation. She would type it up, I could do it.
Is there somebody on the firm that has municipal experience that you could go to with questions? Or would it just be you digging into the code?
Uh, there's...
Spending time that way?
I asked around, and I think there's only one attorney at the firm who did city attorney position. I know, I don't know the full extent of what he did, but I, I do know a brief thing where he had to deal with a lot of complaints, because, forget what city it was, but they were, they had to strip it up there, so he had to deal with a lot of that regulations and writing policies and bringing actions for them via the law. So, I could definitely talk to him. We used to, Tom Rivers was prior to him. He's kind of hard to get into contact with. He's really busy with the magistrate, and I can, I probably see, I could ask him questions. And the real community in general is pretty open to the session.
In all fairness, he was our attorney for who?
Oh, okay.
Three.
Oh, three? It was that long?
Okay, okay. I mean, you have somebody you could go to to help you out, I mean, because you're just getting started, so, I would think it'd be easier on you.
Yeah.
If you had a mentor-type person that could help you.
Yeah, Bill Lorenz, he was just the one that was the city attorney. Yeah, uh, Bill Lorenz, um, he was just below us, was the city attorney.
Any other, any other questions? Most of ours is nuisances, can I ask some, uh, some stuff on land purchases that the town has? And how we would go about selling that? Do you have any information on that?
Um, sort of on the opposite end of one of those, um, where I'm defending someone in something where the city is trying to condemn their property. So unfamiliar on the opposite end, uh, I know at least one other attorney in the office has also been on the seller side of that appreciation, so he would have experience related to that as well.
Cause we have, we have several properties that we've been partying. And some of them we may sell, we may not, but for us, some of, some of the reasons we haven't told is because we have a man of attorney that gave us advice on it.
Yeah.
To make sure we do it, you know, all legally and fair.
Yeah, I believe Marshalltown's also been doing that as well, following that, if you may get lost, that be either your own or a client.
Yeah, it seems like they were having some issues too, about how to sell them.
Yeah, and I think part of it is just following all the formalities and like, alright, this is what, like make sure there's no interested persons that would like affect the vote, like it's a four or three vote or something. And one of the free votes is someone who has financial interests in selling it. He would be advising like that, making sure there's no conflicts of interest.
Yeah, I'm thinking one of them was a council member or something that was interested in.
Hey, thank you everybody.
Thanks for coming.
We'll, we'll decide.
Well, I can stay here and if you think of any other questions, we'll get out of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Residents concerned?
Yeah, Ted, I wanna bring this up.
I'm concerned right now.
I mean, my day is seven forty East Street. Before we built our house, I had that property surveyed, so I know exactly where the lot lines are at. Anyway, you know, I'm gonna call it the south side of my property, there's an alley. And there's a tree right in the middle of it. And a post that's fiber optic, that's a junction post. I was wondering why the town man didn't tell him that was in the middle of the alley when he put that in.
I didn't have nothing to do with it.
I know those trees were put in back in the forties, cause John told me, he helped a guy put them in, and they're on the city property. But the tree's not dead. But it is in the middle of the alley.
And so is that post from the-
And the post is right next to it. Well, the post is actually first and then, then there's a tree, that's a bigger tree, and then there's like two or three smaller ones, which would be no problem to take down, but that big one would be, it would be a chore to take it down, just because of power lines and-
And it's not there, right?
No. It could be.
Is that a fiber connection?
Yes.
Oh, you're kidding me.
It's right next to that tree.
I thought that was an old cable box.
Well, it did used to be before they put the fiber optic line in, then they put that fiber post right next to it.
A little short sighted.
And you know, it, it actually wouldn't be so bothersome, but I plan on building onto the back of my garage, I wanna have a stall back there, and I wanna be able to use that alley. And there's barely room enough to get through there-
Yeah.
-with that post there. And I think the telephone company, if you talk to them and explain the situation, like it don't matter if the cable's under the ground. That don't matter, but that post needs to be moved to the other side of the alley.
Is that one of these rock down?
What's that?
Is it rock down currently, or is it overgrown like some of the-
No, it's just got grass. I mean, it's, it's never really been used. People go up and down all the time, but just like they do all the alleys here in town. But I mean, you guys really need to put in an ordinance where you don't let people plant stuff in alleys.
How far, now that you brought that, how far can you, how far do you have to be off of an alley to build? You don't have to be off of an alley?
You gotta be able to maintain your property. There's some things float over lines, so. If you're gonna build, try to be able to maintain your property. Just like build right off the property line to your neighbor.
Well, I was gonna say, you can't do that, right? Cause there's gotta be room for overflow from the roof or something?
You can't dump water off your roof on your neighbor's property.
Talking about the cedar tree there?
Yeah.
Long to the alley?
Yeah. It's about, no, it's every bit of that big around now. Anyway. And it's pretty tall.
Just wanna happen, just look at it.
But I just wanted to make you guys aware of it, not that you can do anything about that tree right now, but I, I just kinda wanted to make you guys aware of it.
Any other residents concerned?
At Burrows, I guess just still confused about the whole camper ordinance and why it's needed and what it's going to affect or change, cause most of the reasons given for why we need it don't have much to do with the campers or won't be affected by the camper ordinance. Not to mention that ordinances that we do have where it don't get enforced anyway. And then, like Brett just brought up the, the alleys, if they're not gonna get maintained, like they haven't been for decades, why not give them back to the property owners? Why, I mean, that would alleviate all of these headaches.
Try to get one back.
And the, if they, if we're not gonna make them usable, give them back.
Okay, if we give them back, just like his alley.
Yeah.
He ain't gonna have the room to drive down that alley.
I mean-
Cause you got the whole property owner's gonna get split that alley.
Okay, why would he need to? He's got access to it.
Then he won't be able to go down it.
He won't be able to build in the back and have access to it.
He might be able to, he could build a lane on his-
Another reason why you build alleys is to give fire department access-
To the back.
-to get behind properties.
Right, the fire department could pull into a yard if they needed access. I mean-
We tried to get one of the alleys back, but it's on the property owner to do the proper, go through the lawyer and do all that, they didn't wanna spend the money to do that, so. Shouldn't be up to the town to have the lawyer figure out where the line, lines are or whatever, if the property owner wants it back, but.
Okay, so a lot of these issues seem to come down to, we don't know where property lines are, so that's a good place to start.
Got a pretty good idea.
We, but as Hank has pointed out, we don't know exactly, and for some reason we need to know precisely, so let's start there. And figure out where these precise property lines are, and then we can, if an alley hasn't been maintained or used, give it back. Why, why do we need to go through a lot? Just split it half between the two properties. You get this half, you get that half. But why does it have to be a big to-do about what? Instead we're just kinda going-
Go through the calendar order.
Oh, well, we don't know, so we're not gonna do anything about it. I mean, a lot of this stuff seems like pretty simple pictures.
Did you have access to your garage on the alley?
Yeah, I'm not, that alley is used, and it's maintained after eighteen months and eleven requests. And, and just like this alley behind the bar, it's used and it's maintained, and there's one more in town that's used and maintained.
Oh, there's more than one?
There's, there's three of them, I can, I think, that are used and maintained.
There's one just north of us that's used all the time.
Okay, there's four I can think of.
Betty, Becky Port, Betty, Haggerty.
So the ones that are used and maintained, fine, keep those, I respect that, but the ones that, no one has access on their property to them, no one uses them, they're not maintained. Why, what, I mean, some people are building right up to them, you know, like your driveway goes right up to it, I mean, what, wouldn't it be-
I mean, put off.
Oh, oh, still, wouldn't it be easier if that was just yours now, and you not have to worry about it?
But, but the building isn't, that's just kind of-
Right, right, and I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, wouldn't it be eas-, that alley's not used by anyone, no one has access on it. Wouldn't it be easier to just split between those two properties and be done with it? You know?
Then he won't have no access to his garage.
What are you talking about? It's his property, he can access it through his property.
He ain't got no room to access it through his property.
What, what garage are you talking about?
The one he wants built behind his garage.
So it's a built-in access to it.
Yeah, it's, uh-
How you do that, Red?
If you call it out, it's much room, if you split it, I'd have as much room as what you're gonna have now.
Right, you know, it's-
Cause I'm sure that one his have.
So you ain't gonna have room enough to turn back.
Oh, no, you wouldn't have room enough to do that.
Okay, that's a pretty minimal. Is there any other residents concerned?
I guess I'll say something. 201 State Street. I actually heard of an instance, uh, from a guy that I work with that's just on the city council in Marshalltown. He actually has experience with this personally, because his property, they actually eliminated an alley, and, uh, he, he knows quite a bit about it, I could ask him a little bit more if anybody wanted to know, but the way it sounded when he explained it to me a couple of years ago, is they had to get all the neighbors together, and they all had to basically decide together how they were gonna do it, and what they were gonna do to split the costs, and, uh, they basically worked it out amongst themselves, uh, as far as who'd get what, obviously priority goes to the landowner, whose property bunts up against it to get that half. I think they did end up paying for them, but, uh, they ended up making that happen, I mean. You got some alleys here that, like you said, there's trees growing up in it, I mean, it ain't even hardly an alley anymore, let's be honest, but it should be, you know, about as easy to deal with as they could be, but, uh, yeah, there's a lot to consider there. I think that would be a good place to start, as far as we're trying to straighten some of this stuff out, but if you open that up to all these alleys and all these property lines, we're, you're gonna have one heck of a mess with, with all the stuff that's going on here. That being said, it's been this way for this, you know, how long? And in all these gray areas we have, we've been able to come together as a community and, and make it work for this long, without bringing somebody in here and paying them hundreds of dollars an hour to sort out a whole bunch of stuff that we're looking to try and find to sort out. I'd just like to see this stay the nice little town that, uh, that I've come to love, so. I'll just keep giving my opinion about things, I'm not trying to, like with that camper ordinance, I'm not some bleeding heart liberal, we gotta drag everybody up here, we ain't got a place to stay and throw them in a damn camper, you know? I just want the town and the community to be as cordial as possible in trying to sort these, uh, issues out. If people have issues, I would really respect it if they'd come up here and discuss it as a community, so that we all have a chance to, uh, have eyes and ears on some of the things that are going on, so that we can work it out together, cause that's what this is supposed to be for, I, I guess I thought. Thanks.
Any other residents concerned?
Yeah, hang down, 308 State Street. Part of the situation that we're in with the property lines right now, and if we look, if we start looking at property lines, quite honestly, a lot of us won't like what we find. Garages that are built across property lines, uh, you know, several instances of that, uh, so, uh, I'm unfortunately migrated to the point to where Justin and I agree on the fact that we've kind of lived with this for as long as we have, and rather than ask questions that we really don't wanna know the answer to, uh, just to give you, throw you a data point, uh, what's it been, ten years now since I built my fence in my backyard? The, the survey was twelve hundred bucks for my lot, okay, so for one lot, so just kind of, if we were looking at doing something as far as a survey. And you're absolutely right, that's where you have to start. When you start looking at property lines, uh, you can't go with this, this, well, you know, I remember when Boyd did this and did that, you know, well, that's crap, you know, you gotta have a, you gotta have somebody with a license and, cause you're talking, you're talking legalities here and stuff. Part of the reason that we're in this situation, this gray situation, is because we have a lack of specific, hard and fast guidance. And part of that is that, that ordinance that you guys are, are, are looking at as far as the, 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 uh, the RVs and stuff. We don't have a, a, a building code here, uh, we're, we're complying with the state code, whatever the state code is, but we don't have a, an ordinance here as far as, uh, you know, a zoning commission, cause that's what the state requires if you're gonna do that, at least that's my understanding of that, and please don't build any decisions on my foggy recollections, or they're getting worse by the, by the time.
Well, I guess my question is, how do we stop somebody, if we don't have anything, how do we stop somebody from building the, like, you know, somebody building a garage two foot over on my property? How?
Pay twelve hundred bucks and get a server.
Well, and unfortunately, once you ignore the property line over here, and you try to go after me for my property line, ask that young man that, uh, that suffered through law school, how establishing a precedent, uh, figures in, so.
Like maybe grandfathered in?
Well, I'm not even talking about grandfathered in. Uh, if, uh, if a city, and, and we've, we've run into it how many times, you guys? Selective enforcement.
Yep.
Selective enforcement. Have to be careful about that, we're not gonna enforce somebody who are here with them, and you're absolutely right, absolutely right.
So when we get on that, what is it, the county recorder does show some lines?
Accessory. Accessory, yeah.
Yeah, kinda. How accurate are those lines?
They're not.
They're not.
Cause I asked-
Well, they're not accurate to prove, but they are, they're probably really close.
Where are your pants?
So in other words, Red, when you were, you know, they came up and checked out your property, how close was it to the assessor's site as far as?
I don't know, cause we just surveyed it before we built, cause I wanted to know where the property lines is at. And that's what everybody ought to do.
Yep.
If they're gonna build, survey your property. Unless you're absolutely a hundred percent sure that you know what you're doing. But I didn't know, so we had it surveyed, I think ours cost us eight hundred bucks.
Oh, wow, a deal.
But I asked that guy, and I said, now farther down the road, if somebody discrepancies exist or whatever, he says, you call us, we'll go to court. These posts are it, this is the gospel right here, this is it. And I put concrete around them, so I wouldn't lose them, so I know where all four mines at.
I think right now, if you had somebody building, and you looked at the assessor's site, and you can clearly see that it's over that line, I think you'd address it. On, right, right off the bat, just cause you got right there something showing you that there's an issue, I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't think anybody would, would build something that they're gonna have to remove.
Yeah.
If you build-
I mean, it's happened.
Up to the county recorder's office, they got a book where they got like a picture of your lot, and they got where they figured the lot lines at. And I asked that gal up there, I said, now are these accurate? She says, no, these are just approximate. They're, they're not, you know, they're like aerial photos, and they've just made a line where they figured their, their at, but it won't hold up in court.
No, but I bet it's, I bet it's pretty close.
Well, it might be more.
I mean, the guidelines, if you was gonna build a building on a property and you looked at those guidelines and if you stayed inside of them guidelines, I bet a hundred percent you'd be fine. I mean, but then what, we can build it in a foot or whatever.
Well, unless we get a bunch of nitpicking going on, then we're all gonna have a bunch of problems, that's just it, you know?
Well, I don't, I, that really hasn't been a problem, so. I remember one left to remove a garage.
But that is kind of holding up the issue with tree maintenance, is where do we find what tree is on what line, that's what's holding that up? So it is something that needs to be known?
That's what we went by to get rid of the trees we got rid of.
Right, right, but I mean, that's.
I mean, we're not gonna spend, last time I talked with a county assessor, to do my place was over thirty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, well, I mean, the town's not gonna spend that kind of money to assess whatever.
Um, it's good to remember what the guy that was here just a little bit ago said about the city coming to the property owner and having them, you can have them sign something, an agreement saying that the city's not liable for any. You know, say if, if the tree service comes in there and puts ruts in your yard or whatever, and they're taking that tree down and it might be a little bit of contention on whether or not it's on one side of the property line or the other, if, if the property owner wants rid of it and the city wants to come in and take care of it, you can have a no liability waiver. And the city won't be liable for anything.
Any more residents concerned? Move on to whole business, we'll have a second reading with ordinance one twenty-seven, adding a new section limiting the use of the occupied recreational vehicles.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Liscum, Iowa, section one, new section. The code of ordinances of the city of Liscum, Iowa is amended by adding a new section, six, section sixty-nine point one-two, occupied recreational vehicles. Which is hereby adopted to read as follows. Sixty-nine point one-two, occupied recreational vehicles. Occupied recreational vehicles may be parked and occupied on private property no longer than fourteen consecutive days of continuously occupying, living in, or using a recreational vehicle with a maximum of twenty-eight days total in the calendar year. Additional days may be approved by contacting council to request variances. Section two, repealer, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three severability clause, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be judged invalid or unconstitutional. Such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
Hang on.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, no, I have an opinion, Mike, I'm allowed to have an opinion, so. I'm just still curious, is it only the tax thing that we're worried about on this? Is there something else?
There's. We already had troubles, troubles like that.
Yeah, the one down there that's all covered up right now. I'm like somewhere going around all over the place.
Okay, we have ordinances on taking care of things though. Any of your trash?
So why do you think this ordinance is bothering you?
It doesn't bother me personally, I'm.
Does it hurt you?
Nope.
You're concerned about?
I am concerned about us continuously making more rules when it's not absolutely necessary. And in my opinion, you eventually get to a point where you're just gonna keep poking at things, cause you don't like the way something looks. That's my, that's my opinion on why it was gonna end up happening here.
It is happening.
Well, and my opinion is, I don't want four trailers sitting behind me that aren't hooked up to sewer and aren't hooked up to water. And their trash is coming into my yard.
Okay, there is trash ordinance though, there is trash ordinance.
But if we didn't have four trailers over there, there wouldn't be four times the trash.
I have a mobile home next to me, a trailer home, when everyone calls and trash blows my yard all the time. So should we just get rid of those too?
So we have ordinances to take care of that?
No, no, I know, but my point is, that's not very valid argument, cause it can still come from a house.
Well, yeah, it can come from, I don't want four campers.
Why doesn't it hurt you though, with the camper sitting there? Just you don't like the way it looks?
Noise, value of my property. They're not, we have, we have four campers over there and who's paying taxes, property tax on them?
So you're saying that you would rather just see the property sit empty and still get the same amount of taxes off of it? So if you're getting eighty-six dollars off that lot with, with a camper on it, without a camper on it, and then the camper moves in and you're still getting eighty-six dollars? Cause you're not, they're not paying taxes with a camper, right?
Exactly, exactly.
So you'd rather see it just sit completely bare and?
Yep.
Empty?
Yep.
Because nobody's gonna come build in this town, they are not. Empty lots have sat empty in this town for years. People aren't building, besides, besides you, I was, I even told Justin that today. Yes, wow.
I was gonna say, Red's got, Red's got a whole little city up there.
So, but there's other empty lots and people aren't building houses.
Well, we gotta be able to sell them, the lot, cause what, three of the lots are owned by the city.
That's correct.
Well, I've tried to sell them numerous times and you guys don't wanna sell them until we talk to the lawyer.
Exactly.
But there's other empty lots in town.
But they're probably.
I'd rather see them used.
They're probably for neighbor control.
Okay. But you're not fixing any problems with this, is my point. So you had campers, you had campers, my nicksens, and they had dogs getting loose, right? That's what I heard.
I heard about dogs.
I heard dogs were getting loose.
I know there's complaints about loud noises and running four-wheelers and motorcycles at, at midnight at night.
Another beef in the yard.
Yeah.
And I think there used to be some Gundersons over here that used to rip around town in the middle of the night. That weren't living in a trailer.
Said I want Gunderson, and when I was young, I used to get involved in a lot of stuff in town.
So it happens back in the day though, right? So it's still not really.
But it's changed, it's been taken care of.
So what do you think this ordinance is gonna really hurt, what do you think it's gonna hurt?
I didn't say this is gonna hurt anything in and of itself, I'm behind the point that I think we're going to continue and just keep nitpicking people. And nitpicking things, and I'm afraid of getting to a point where in this small, quiet town, I'm here to be left, I live here to be left alone and to live in quiet. And low taxes, that's all I want.
You wanna live in quiet, but you want me to have to put up with that four trailers right beside you?
Again, my point is though.
Now, that's not quiet, is it?
My point is, Pam, how is making a trailer ordinance going to fix that when somebody could just live in a house and make sense and not? Yeah, I know, you all think I'm difficult, but I'm really not, I'm just legitimately concerned about where we go in the future.
I guess when I look at it, if we have four trailers, okay, one person owns that property. He has something, let's see, who do I have to say that? He has something invested in Liscum, the other three don't. So, I don't know how it's.
How do you know they won't start making the property better together though? Which will make something less go.
Well, we saw how much better it's gotten up there.
But again, this, this ordinance doesn't even fix your issue, cause he's grandfathered in, right?
He is, is, one trailer.
We don't know that for sure, that's one of the questions for a lawyer.
There was two up there last year.
So then why does we pass this, we don't know somebody who lives here in town, has lived here quite a while, is grandfathered in?
Well, just lately, he's been back.
Okay, but if we don't know we can grandfather him in, then why would we pass this? Until that's clarified? Do you know what I'm saying?
Anyway, I.
So, no, if this passes and we can't grandfather him in, because you just said.
Okay, we've probably discussed it longer than, I don't see, I don't see why anybody ought to be able to live on a property for however many days you think they ought to live there and not pay any taxes. Is that fair to the rest of the town?
They're paying property taxes.
Is that fair to the rest of the property owners in town?
It does not hurt me.
It'll hurt you? It does me.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance one number one twenty-seven.
I'll say a motion.
All those in favor, Gunderson, yes, Hayes?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yep.
Shebal? Nope. Motion carried. Discussion on nuisances. We got some?
I haven't heard anything on that either.
Okay, we will consider city attorney options.
If you wanna discuss that tonight or wait.
I think you wanna leave. I think it's kind of long.
Is everybody in favor of that?
Yes.
Consider resolution twenty-four dash, I don't know, adoption of the twenty-twenty-five budget amendment.
We have a public hearing that's at the top of the page first before we move on.
Okay, so do we close it?
Just not, if any, in the middle.
So the public hearing, twenty-twenty-five budget amendment, gonna open that up? Any comments written or what, or we have a couple?
No, we're in.
So we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we just need to close it and then we'll have a party other.
All right, the public hearing, twenty-twenty-five budget amendment is now closed. Discussion on the twenty-twenty-five budget, is it?
No, we don't. We need to vote on the resolution then, the last item in the business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Consider resolution adoption of twenty-twenty-five budget amendment.
So this current amendment is this current amendment column, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're taking off for Adam. Oh, I see, any fund balances, maybe a quarter of the year is out of business.
Right. They're spending that much more funds possibly.
We have a motion to approve the resolution twenty, twenty-four days ten, adoption of twenty-twenty-five budget amendment.
Well, I guess, Christie, can I ask, so we, we need another eighty thousand, I've never, I've never dealt with one, eighty thousand dollars in public safety, right?
Right, and then at the bottom it says why?
Public works, gotcha, gotcha, okay, perfect, perfect. I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Motion been made, seconded for the, consider resolution twenty-four dash ten, adoption of twenty-twenty-five budget amendment. Hope Gunderson, yes, Hayes?
Yes.
McDonald? Shebal? Yes. And the new business, consider fire departments pick up burgesses.
Hello, uh, and your orders. There is what we questioned Christie about last time. Correct? I don't know where you're at. So that's the bed for the pickup, the burgesses.
This is what you paid for it?
Yep, yep. So it's more useful, safer, be a lot more, uh, efficient, the department put that bed on it. Uh, that money is coming from our soup supper, our donations, our yearly donations for farmers, from that, from that fund, that kitty. Which is in tune of.
Fourteen, thirteen, four, fourteen, three or four?
Yeah. It's a big, it's over thirteen grand, our addition to the truck. I, uh, according to Christie, the, the, uh, the order sheets, correct, Christie? The dead trouble is that?
Yeah.
True, sure, yeah. That's just the final, the final build sheet, the pickup itself, which is nothing more than a strip bound GM Chevy truck. Gas, single axle, rear, not a du, not a dueling, uh, but one engine again.
What money did we buy that from?
Uh, that one's car. Cause the original, of course, they were getting one from Woodhouse, the cars still beat them. So they beat them and then we dropped the, the bed, they dropped the bed on the truck, so that even they were still moving, I don't know if they built with a bed on it.
And the bed has the, had the bed of metal looking pretty cool.
Not to mention, if you guys have ever watched the fire department at, at the fire scene with one of those, uh, you, you totally eliminate the, the possibility of the whole fat bald guy slipping and sliding, trying to stand on the edge of the damn box.
Yeah, our, our current situation, we have baskets up in there of the truck, these here are called Manuel's. Literally, that's where the guys stand, they're now contained within the structure of the bed of the truck, no longer in a wire basket hanging off the hitch. So it's actually a heck of a lot safer option by us, uh, having that truck built that way.
What color is the truck in? Red, correct, Red? Yeah, it's just a little.
It's red and we're debating on whether we have certain chemicals on the bed that we add to it, painted red so that we can, still look like a fire truck. That's the department debate at the moment. I'd say I'd rather not look like a tire truck, I want it to look like a fire truck, so it's, how much red do we put on the bed of this truck?
This isn't gonna have a water tank in it, is it?
Yes, yes.
It's the same one that's in the trucks now, just slides in.
Got you.
Yep, and so this truck, the bed of this truck, it can be repurposed on the next truck and the following truck and on the following truck. The way that it's built, it can be, it can just be set on pretty much any frame with an adapter. So we'll be able to utilize this bed for probably longer than I'm alive.
We need a motion to purchase that house?
No.
So we want a discussion on open burning ban, burn ban policies.
So the fire chiefs met, so historically, everybody real, I don't know if everybody realizes, we have not had a, uh, fire ban in Marshall County for eons. Long, long time. The reason why everybody around us has burned bans and we do not, is because Marshall County's, uh, environment association bylaws stated it had to be a unanimous vote. So we have unfortunately one chief in the, in the county that his stand on it was, we're infringing, infringing on somebody's civil, civil rights. Their liberties to burn on their own property. Regardless of the weather, if he wants to be stupid, he can be stupid into his property, that was actually his stand on it, and that's why it's been that way as long as it's been. We were able to change that, uh, two months ago at the last fire chiefs meeting, um, and it is now a super majority, so. And it is now a supermajority, so Marshall County, moving forward, will most likely have a burn ban. If the surrounding counties actually do, uh, put it, put on a ban, we'll probably follow suit. So the reason why I need to bring to your attention is, you might, once you check your open burning, uh, ordinances, and in the event that the county has a burn ban, what does the city do? So it's just something you guys might wanna look at, so I need to bring to your attention, so that if, if you decided to, well, Marshall County's under a burn ban, so it's town, if, you know, it's recreational, if it's burning trash, and whatever, a burn ban, burn ban might stand on it. So you might wanna kind of go over the ordinance, see how it's stated on the legal side of it, and then, uh, if you need to make a change, you've got time to make that change, obviously. We're going into winter, so...
Yeah, how do we notify?
Well, it'd be just like, uh, the county burn ban, this could be, it'll be posted on the news. If it goes, if we have Marshall County goes under a burn ban, we can put it on Facebook, but it will be on the news as well, it'll be on the radio.
Okay.
As, as all the others are. But in the event, and you can put it out in, in the mayor's letter, or whatever. You know, in the event there's a Marshall County burn ban, so, you know, go for it with the county.
So...
That's something just to, to think about with that.
Just for a question on that, if the county has a burn ban, the sheriffs are able to do something about it? So they catch somebody burning, or what is the repercussions of somebody burning?
It's no different, that, the county is where it is here in town. They cannot find them for it, but we can go out there and put it out. And if they wanna relight it, they can, we can put it right back out.
You're allowed to put them out, but they're not allowed to find them for lighting a fire?
There is no, there is no, uh, ticket book, per se, no code that says, this is the dollar amount for burning on a burn, under a burn ban. So other counties in the state actually do have ticket books, and they're actually, they charge assessed, it's determined by the county assessor, and all, all that side of it. And then the ticket books are actually given to the chief, and they actually do write tickets. Marshall County's just not one of those.
See, I know Marshall Town did that in wheel burning. They don't?
It's Marshall Town.
Marshall Town.
Counties differ, so that's why I said, you guys are gonna have to take a look at the ordinance, just see what the ordinance says, and then if it just stood out, that this was under a burn ban, we're gonna follow suit with the county, then at least the residents know. Get burned trash for a while, so whatever the case may be. Might actually help get some of the trash to deal with, and then actually get people to pay for the trash bill rather than try to burn it back in.
So that burn ban, that's not just open, but that's a burn barrel, or like a burn, like an enclosed thing, or that's all burned?
So that's, there's, there's a gray area. What is considered burning? What is considered open burning? What is considered recreational burning?
Right.
Right, so just to get this wood, does not mean it's timber.
None of them, you've got more...
Dunage, dunage is not constituted as recreational.
Like, I guess, is there a line between piling up, put in your yard, or like, you know, one of those like burnt pits?
So, is, is typically a pallet, recreational firewood?
Okay, then?
So, see, the same gray area.
Right.
Dunage versus timber.
Right.
Recreational firewood versus burning trash. So that's, that's what you, you really need to pay attention to, what you got written in the ordinance, because it came back and bite, it came back and bite you. So just wanted to make you aware of what we decided to do as, as chiefs, and we decided that, uh, send take a stand on the, on the burn bans, and join suit when it's necessary. Obviously, in the last four years, and the number of grass fires that had to have gotten way out of control, and had eight departments respond to, uh, we need to focus on the burn ban. Just the last one, I believe, that was in Melbourne, eight departments. And they went for almost a mile before they got it. And it was a thirty-five, forty mile an hour gust day, it was quite a wind.
Is that one started on fire?
What, that?
Melbourne wasn't starting on fire.
No, but the way it got...
That was a barn fire.
But the way it got away from the town?
Yeah.
So just a simple, just a simple barn fire. I mean, you got eight departments chasing that one, you got barn fire. Would you want to focus on, on what's necessary, what, what they should be there for? So making sure all the residents are aware of what they should and shouldn't do.
Just because there isn't a fine doesn't mean that that, that burn ban doesn't have teeth.
Right.
I would hate to go to court when my neighbor sued me for burning their house down.
Yeah.
If there was a burn ban. I think that would be it.
I'd burn my shoes.
I think the lawyer would be pissed, 'cause he'd only be charged for about fifteen minutes at a time. You know?
We just had that, I did, thank you for that?
What?
We had, uh, we actually were called out for a fire, and the gentleman was getting out for...
Oh, yeah.
Yep, okay, you got it right to do, though, to do that. You know, we, we leave all of them, and I set back to the, to the roadway, and there I stood. A lot of property, but if that goes, if that fire travels towards that property line, I will be on that property, and I will be putting out your fire. Because you'll be liable if I don't. So really, you need to focus on what the ordinance says. You got it? That's all I got.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben. Discussion on the twenty-twenty-five budget.
Last year, they, for last year's budget, they had changed things to where we had to have the extra two meetings. This year, they did make a change. We have to have our information to the county. No, I don't mean, to the county, um, ten days earlier than we had to last year. But other than that, so that means, and they can, we could have the first of those meetings earlier. Um, I haven't mapped that out completely yet, just to let you know, we'll still may have the two extra meetings that we had last year. Thanks. Um, that's March and April. So we'll start budgets that end of January. Hopefully, I have the numbers from the annual by that time, so we know what our possible income can be. If there's anything you guys want to work on that's out of the norm. Like, we worked on the community building, we put up, working on getting the building built. They got a truck. This year was pretty, it was put this much in one time. Um, if you think of anything else, you know, if there's something else in the building you still want to get done, um, I do know that the world over there is kind of falling apart with that one. Um, it's not major, but they're not cheap either, so anything like that, then we can talk about that in January. But we'll need to pretty much have the budget completed at the February meetings, because before the March meeting, I'll have to have everything turned in, and our public hearing date set and all of that. So basically, we got two months to work on it. Go from there.
Consider paying up for trails.
The trails?
Yeah, trails and corporate and pledge.
The guys had voted to give them ten thousand dollars. It was, I'm remembering, it was kind of based on if they got that grant.
Exactly, exactly.
That is not being awarded until January. So, but they're asking for their funds, that pledge money. So you wanna wait until that?
I told gentlemen, I think so.
Okay.
'Cause if I remember right, we awarded that pledge.
Right.
Okay, yes.
And that's why they had told the gentleman, too, so, okay.
Community reports, so I guess we got our fire department. We don't have anybody from first responders. Streets and alleys, um... Have anybody?
I don't, no, I don't worry, so...
Parks, shebal and McDonald.
The one thing I was gonna ask is if we should put a light over at the park to light up the actual park better itself? 'Cause it gets rather dark at night. And I know we've talked about, we talked about that when we put it in. Yes, just getting a light that actually lights the park itself. I'm mostly just thinking about nothing happening to it, I guess.
Do we have workers be aware? We don't.
Come off the hole along the alley, put a light up over there, drive it down.
Where's the street? Is there a light or post on the corner? I wondered if we just put a street light, we could get a street light up on the corner, would that be enough light?
We've got one.
Oh, well, that'd be...
We'd have to put three, we'd have to put one in the alley, on the corner of the alley.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
I can contact. I got a new contact, she's retired last Friday.
That's all I got.
I'll ask them. We can start there.
General utilities, shebal and gray seat. Sanitation, looks like it's about the same as it always is, three hundred and thirty-three thousand gallon, used every day. Eleven gallon, eleven thousand gallons per day. Water is in compliance with the ID and other requirements. October wastewater flow total of four hundred and sixteen thousand gallons, average of thirteen thousand gallons per day. Recorded one point five inches of rain in October. On the guy. Public safety. Community building, Mike?
No.
Did we, did somebody come up and fix whatever? No.
Not the last one first of the year.
Okay.
Even in here to redo what they did?
I ain't heard from him.
And, and that was gonna call him, so, whatever. I mean, all the lights work if it's all okay, it just can't dim those three over there, and the rest, or whatever.
Yeah, one, we can definitely work, and they start lighting.
Motion to adjourn.
All second.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.